No, I don't.
At six thirty-four P. M., I'm going to call the meeting to order. And Renee, if I could please have a roll call.
Ms. Williford?
Here.
Mr. Parker?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Ms. Byrd?
Here.
Mr. Beck? Mr. Axton?
Here.
Mr. Jablonsky? We have a quorum.
Moving to consent items. Item number one, consideration of approval rejection amendment and or postponement of the minutes of the February tenth, twenty twenty-two Regular Planning Commission meeting. Item number two, consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and or postponement of C O S dash two-one-two-two dash one-one. A Norman rural certificate of survey submitted by Troy Henderson, Jr., Pollard and Whitehead Surveying, Inc. for Henderson Estates for twenty point zero-zero-eight acres of property located on the east side of eighty-fourth Avenue northeast, approximately a half mile north of Tecumseh Road. Item three, consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and or postponement of C O S dash two-one-two-two dash twelve. A Norman rural certificate of survey submitted by Kevin and Julie Haley, Park Hill, for Haley Estates two, a replat of tracks B and C of Haley Estates for thirty-five point zero-six acres of property generally located at the northeast corner, I'm sorry, northwest corner of East Lindsay Street and Sixtieth Avenue southeast. Short form plats, item number four, consideration of approval acceptance rejection amendment and or postponement of S P F dash two-one-two-two dash five, a short form plat submitted by W P Land LLC, Dodson Thompson Mansfield P L L C for Medwise Classen for one point zero-zero-two-nine acres of property generally located on the east side of Classen Boulevard and six hundred and ten feet south of East Cedar Lane Road. Does any member of the commission wish to remove any item from the consent docket? Does any member of the audience wish to remove any item from the consent docket? And if so, please announce which items are being pulled to discuss in their regular order. Seeing none, I'd take a motion to approve. Oh, sorry.
I'm a little hard here now, I'm sorry, but I just hear you. I'm here for a resounding issue that was scheduled for today.
I don't think we've gotten to that item yet. If you know your item number, if you've not already done so, there on the cart to the back, there's a place that has slips of paper that look like this to fill out with your name and address. And if you bring them up here, we'll call you during the audience comment part, and we'll make sure you get a chance to speak. And since we do have a lot of people here today, just so everybody's aware, every audience member will be given three minutes to talk. If you would like a warning thirty seconds before your time is up, please let me know at the beginning, and I'll give you a heads up. Otherwise, I'm going to defer the full time to you. So, just a heads up on that. Okay. And I know there had been prior to the meeting starting some question as to how the order of things will go. So, staff will present a presentation on an item, and then the planning commission will have a chance to ask questions of the staff. Following that, there'll be a applicant presentation, and likewise, planning commission will ask questions of the applicant. Then we will open for audience comment, and then there'll be planning commission discussion before the vote. So, that's the order of everything. So, all right. I would take a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion to adopt the consent docket carried five to zero.
Moving to our non-consent items, we're going to look at item five and six together. Consideration, item number five, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and or postponement of resolution number R one-two-two-dash-nine-four for Rental Ranch Two LLC and D. L. Hayes Co. request amendment of the Norman twenty-twenty-five land use and transportation plan from low-density resident residential designation to commercial designation for the east twenty feet of Lot fifty and all of Lot fifty-one, Block Two, Woods Lawn Edition located at six-two-one Highland Parkway. And item number six, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and or postponement of ordinance number O dash two-one-two-two dash three-seven for Rental Ranch Two LLC and D. L. Hayes Co. request rezoning from R-one single-family dwelling district to C-two commercial, general commercial district for the east twenty feet of Lot fifty and all of Lot fifty-one, Block Two, Woods Lawn Edition located at six-two-one Highland Parkway. And I'd take the staff presentation.
Hi, I'm Logan Hubbell with the Planning Department. We have an application from Rental Ranch Two LLC and D. L. Hayes Company for a Norman twenty-twenty-five land use plan amendment from low-density residential designation to commercial designation and a rezoning to C-two general commercial district located at six-twenty-one Highland Parkway. The site is zoned R-one single-family dwelling district and is zero point two-two acres in area. So, here is the subject tract. It is low-density commercial, as you can see there. All the area to the east and partially to the south is low-density commercial. The area to the north and to the east is commercial. And then this is the proposed change. The zoning is very similar. It is entirely R-one to the west and to the south, and then to the north and east is C-two general commercial. The existing land use, this one's currently vacant, and everything around, for the most part, matches the zoning. It's a single-family residential to the, or to the west and to the south, and then to the east is commercial. There's the aerial of the site. This is looking away from the site. This is across the street. There's a home. This is the site itself from the road. This is looking to the east, and this is looking to the west down Highland Parkway. This is the plat. Here's the site plan, which does have a parking lot, and we had a six percent protest area. The applicants wish to construct a commercial office and storage building, and staff forwards this request for rezoning from R-one single-family dwelling district to C-two general commercial district as ordinance number O twenty-one-twenty-two dash thirty-seven for consideration by the planning commission and a recommendation by city, to city council.
Thank you. Any questions for the commission of staff? Seeing none, we take the applicant presentation.
My name is Bill Hayes with D. L. Hayes Company, and we've submitted this plan to the city to change the zoning from the R-one to C-two. The owner of the company is wanting to make a car storage area where he can put his cars there for storage. And that's basically what we want to do. Any questions?
Any questions of the applicant?
Yes. Can you talk to, talk to us about the height of the building in comparison to the buildings that are?
It'll be approximately twelve feet high and fourteen-foot high in the front, and probably twenty-foot high at the point at the, at the high bridge.
And how, how do you, how are you going to fence off the, the property, the commercial property in comparison to the R-one adjacent to it?
We'll put a six-foot fence there.
Do you have any renderings of the proposed structure?
No, it'll just be a metal building. It'll, we'll have to comply with the City of Norman's Building Code, which may require us to put a stucco finish on it, and we built several of them around Norman. But it's, it's not going to be for anybody else except for the owner of the rental place. He wants to keep his cars there. He's got seven or eight cars, and he wants to keep, he owns the building to the east already. And this lot has a twenty-five-foot commercial lot included next to it, which he owns also. He bought all three of them, all two of them at the same time. So, it's got a twenty-five-foot commercial strip on the east side, and then there's a ten-foot electrical easement on that twenty-five foot. So, we will be, we'll be building west of that, of the easement.
So, is he, I'm over here. So, this, this is going to be a private building just for private parking?
Yes.
And there's no, isn't there the opportunity in the future that it could be used for commercials, since if we're trying to zone it commercial? What's to keep that from happening?
Well, just the owner, the integrity of the owner, you know, he is, he wants to keep it for himself, but you're right. I mean, it could change. But it will still be done as a storage building. You know, we'll have two overhead doors and some exit doors.
So, the whole idea is to park the cars inside?
Right.
Because I noticed there's a parking lot outside, too.
Right. Now, we, we could change the parking lot so there's, it would be narrower and just have two driveways then, if that bothers anybody. We just drew it with the parking there like, like I showed it on the plan.
So, that plan's more of a preliminary site plan?
Oh, yeah.
And I just want to clarify. So, he owns several of the commercial buildings to the east of this also? And is there a reason that those buildings couldn't be utilized for the same purpose?
They're rented.
I don't know.
Matter of fact, he was going to use them for the same thing, and his partner passed away, and they're going to rent it out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Where, what you'll do is have a minute to speak, just a minute. Okay, seeing, oh, go ahead.
I have a question, just a clarification question. They are rented out, or they're going to rent them out?
They're going to rent out. They, they did some remodeling to them, and to the building to the east. Is that the one you're talking about? Yeah.
Okay.
So.
I guess I have another question. I'm still trying to guess. There, why, what was, what's the draw of putting a, just a, a building for parking, private parking here instead of somewhere else? Just because, what's the draw for putting a, a building that's just for parking right here instead of somewhere else? Just because he has the property now?
You mean, why put, why build a building there?
It's, it's just for private, for his own, like, car collection, right? Is that what I understand?
Yes.
So, why here, I guess, is what I'm trying to understand.
Because he already had part of the lot, zone C-one. The east part of, the east twenty-five feet is already C-one, and we're just trying to get it all C-one or C-two.
I've, I've got just a quick question.
Yeah.
When, when he bought all the lots together, when, what year was that?
Recently.
Oh, it was recently?
Yeah. They've been for sale for years. No one, no one's ever bought them. Yeah, if you want to ask him.
If you want to ask me some questions, I'm the.
So, this is him?
This is, I'm the, yeah, I'm the guy.
Andy Dark's guys.
And so, it's not like I have a lot of money in this giant car collection. I'm going to put refrigerators and stoves and paint, and it's going to be a storage building. The building to the south, I can't use the language in this room, and I don't want this area to be like that. The building to the east, not mine, is not real pleasant looking. And whether the people that protest or not will all agree that my building is clean. My building's not overgrown. There's not a lot of noise in my building, and that's kind of where I'm at. I grew up on Flood Street. I've been here my whole life. You know, I'm not, it's, why do I want to put it there? Well, because I already own the one to the east, so I can protect myself there. So, other people can't come in, and I'm living in the middle of a junkyard. And that sounds arrogant and rude, but it's like pit bulls. Nobody likes pit bulls. Well, pit bulls are born with a blank slate, and pit bulls are fine. So, this building I want to do is to protect me, put my stuff in, and I'm not interested in selling it. I'm not going to, it's not a mechanic shop. It's not a, I mean, I don't know what else I can, you know. I've never done this before. He has, and so, he's guiding me through this, and I can't keep my mouth shut because I don't want to get him getting hammered on for stuff that.
I've got one additional question. The, the residential areas that are around that, what year were those homes constructed?
Probably in the eighties or maybe even before then.
Seventies or eighties?
Seventies, early eighties, yeah.
And I'm pretty approachable. Nobody said anything to me. That doesn't, I mean, I don't know how this works, but, you know, I'll talk to anybody, and they may agree. We may not agree, but this isn't going to be a, it's going to be a, somebody's going to do something with that land. I've already been offered lots more than I paid for the land. It's not about the money. You know, it needs to be done cleanly and nicely, and, you know, I'm sounding like I got OCD or something, but, you know, there's some junk over there. And I don't want my stuff around a bunch of more junk or new junk or.
I don't know if you saw the property to the, to the south, but it's, it's a commercial property, but it's kind of dilapidated. We've talked to the city about trying to do something with it, and they say they've done all they can do right now. And the property to the north of us is all commercial, and the property to the east of us is all commercial.
Right. My, my concern, I'm not concerned about the properties necessarily around it, just that it's a residentially zoned property that's sitting vacant for forty-two years.
Right.
So, I don't foresee a, that property being utilized in another way. Thanks for your comments.
Any other questions?
Any other questions by commission? Okay, thank you. And we're going to move to the public comment section now for audience to speak. Just, I'm going to call up Melissa Hearn. And Melissa, when you come up, if you will please state your name, even though I already stated it, and your address, and please let me know if you'd like a thirty-second warning. Otherwise, I'm going to give you a full three minutes.
Sure, you can give me a warning. I tend to blather. Melissa Hearn, and I live at seven oh-four Highland Parkway. And I'm representing myself as a homeowner, and the homeowner across the street from me, who's a teacher, and she signed, she signed the letter that I, I sent to, to the planning commission. And she couldn't be here tonight, and she's a homeowner. A lot of the homes in that little area, the homes were built in the nineteen fifties, and many of them are rentals. And so, we just happen to be two homeowners that live in that little circle of area, that little area. And we do have some objection to having it zoned commercial. I agree with Andy. There's, there's some other bad places on the street that we like to see changed, too. But we're just talking about this particular place. Andy's a nice guy. I, I think his, his hobby requires a lot of skill and talent, and, and I wish him well with it. I wish he didn't have to build a garage there. And it's my understanding from the preliminary meeting that we all had together that it will be this metal building, and then the rest of it will be concrete for parking. And I, I heard someone say that that could be modified. But, so, what we have is just a basic grassy lot. And if it's, if it's rezoned, then it will, it will affect the neighborhood to build commercial things on there. We think, the homeowners think it will devalue the property. The person who owns the home right next to the lot, I only have hearsay about what she thinks because she lives out of state. Her sister manages the property. I talked to the people who rent it. A lot of the people who live in the area have families, young people, or they're old retired people like myself who live in modest homes, with, you know, one-car garages and stuff. And we like it. We like it the way it is. Anyway, what the renters told me was that when they found out this property was going to be rezoned, when the owners found out, that they told the renters that they were going to move them to another part of the city in one of their other properties, and they would put their property up for sale. So, I think that just that.
Warning.
What?
Just your thirty-second warning.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I'm worried about what happens to the property after I die, after Andy dies. Things aren't usually rezoned the other direction. Once they become commercial, they're not going to go back. We've got a grassy lot that is, you know, holds carbon dioxide, takes that out of the air. We don't have a concrete slab that's going to create more rainwater runoff. It's not going to devalue.
Your time. Thank you so much for your comments. We appreciate it. I'm going to move to Clifton Stone. And just a reminder, if you'll please say your name and address when you come up. And if you would like a thirty-second warning, let me know. Otherwise, you'll have a full three minutes.
Okay, I'll be fine, I think. My name's Cliff Stone. I own the home across the street. It's six hundred Dennison Drive. My family lives there. My kids live there off and on, and it's been in the family since the nineteen fifties. I've owned it for probably ten years. My primary residence is near the university on Keith Street. I'm a disabled veteran, by the way, and I'm partially blind in one eye, and I, I have a really hard time hearing. I just picked up bits and pieces of the conversation. Primarily, what I want to ensure is that you have a copy of the protests that I submitted. And I submitted a supplement to that, which included some Google Earth images of the neighborhood with the building behind it to give some reference to what we're looking at in terms of being placed there, potentially being placed there. And I, because of my hearing problem, I can't, I can't have much of a dialogue here, but I want to ensure that you got all of that, particularly those images, so you can objectively take a look at it. I did pick up a couple of comments. I'd like to give you my email address, too. We need to be in contact. And I agree with what you said about the, the owner of the home leaving. She at first objected. She couldn't protest because the time was too short for a formal protest. She did, however, object for reasons similar to what, what I stated. I think I had nine or ten in my initial protest. And then the supplemental letter that I, that I added had a few others along with that Google Earth image. But a couple of comments I, I want to make, and I just heard the mention of an office being associated with whatever else he said. And then I think there were, and then he said, it's just going to be for storage. But part of my concern regarding any rezoning is the potential for what that may become. Whoever establishes something there, a commercial building, or what's expressed in the application, that is a metal building, it could become anything over time. And it just being right next to the residential neighborhood, and that's one reason I submitted that Google image. You can get a good, a good perspective for, for the damage that can occur economically to the homeowners, plus aesthetically to the area. And that's all I want to say. I just want to make sure you got my formal information, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else from the public care to make a comment? Seeing none, I'd move to Planning Commission discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, I would consider a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried four to one.
Thank you. Moving to our next non-consent item, special use for bar, lounge, or tavern. Consideration, item seven, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and or postponement of ordinance number O dash two-one-two-two dash two-three. B W B two L P requests special use for a bar, lounge, or tavern for a sixth acre of property located at seven-nine-six Asp Avenue, Logi's on the Corner. Starting with a staff presentation.
Hello, Laura Hoggett with the Planning Department. So, we have an application from B W B two L P, which is Logi's on the Corner for a special use for bar, lounge, or tavern at seven-nine-six Asp Avenue. So, it is currently, or it has historically been a restaurant use, and the applicant can kind of explain why they're requesting the special use. It's surrounded by other commercial properties. I think I skipped one. There we go. And it is currently C-three. The base zoning will remain the same, and it's surrounded by C-three. Here's an aerial, aerial of the property. The building will remain as is with the patio in the back. I guess my pointer's not working. Let's see. So, this is looking across Asp. Sorry, looking north on Asp, south, and then, sorry, it's kind of hard with the sun in the background, but this is Logi's with the rooftop addition there. And then we did get forty-nine point six percent protest. The applicant is here. They, they don't have a PowerPoint, but they do have a presentation, and then I'm available for questions as well.
All right, questions for the staff? Okay. Maybe if you could just clarify a little bit about what the change, I, I think that that wasn't from what their current use is to what the changes are, maybe a little bit more explanation.
So, they've been a restaurant, which requires thirty-five percent food sales. And with the alcohol law changes in twenty eighteen, that kind of, it changed what three-point-two beer, you know, we don't have that anymore. So, it kind of changed their ratio, and they could go over the specifics a little more. But, so now they have to be special use for a bar unless they can meet their food sales.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying. Any other questions for staff? Sorry. Seeing none, I take the applicant presentation.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joe Bendetti. I'm the owner of Logi's on the Corner and also of the property at seven ninety-six Asp. We're also, they're our own landlord. Logi's has been here since two thousand and five. We've served a menu, a full kitchen, every day since two thousand and five. Along the lines, about two thousand and eighteen, they changed the liquor laws in Oklahoma, and low-point beer now could not be counted other than alcohol. So, as a result, a lot of folks were thrown into a situation where they may or may not meet a ratio. To avoid possibly a yearly audit or any kind of competition agenda, we applied for a special use to not have to be under that ratio requirement. They say history repeats itself, and it sure is repeating itself here tonight. When I bought this building in two thousand and five, I had to go in front of the city council to get a liquor license. On the eve of that meeting, I got a call from Rainey Powell's attorney telling me that I would, A, never get a liquor license, that I would never do business in Norman, and that I should sell my business to Rainey Powell, the building that I just bought. the building that I just bought, the night of, the night prior to our liquor license meeting to get approval for our initial liquor license. So why is that important? Well, it's important because it shows what I'm up against with Mr. Powell. He really is the only opposition to this. He was an impediment to my business in 2005, and he's an impediment to my business today. He'll tell you from our pre-development meeting that he's opposed to bars in general on the street because it's going to turn into Sixth Street in Austin, Texas. It's going to be a row of just bars and nothing else. Well, I have some unique experience on Sixth Street in Texas. I owned a bar on Sixth Street for 15 years. I can assure you that Norman's not going to become Sixth Street. To demonstrate the hypocrisy of his argument, he does not want us to have a special use, yet he himself owns a business, a building, I'm sorry, at 333 Boyd Street. His tenant is the Cross Cannon Brewery. And I can show you, if you allow me, Mr. Powell's endorsement of their special use to have a tavern, a nightclub. So it's not okay for me or anybody else, but it's okay for Mr. Powell. So I think the argument he makes is transparent. Originally, it was just him and my competitor across the street to show up. I believe Mr. Powell wants my building. I believe he wants to run me out of business. And I believe he thinks that Jeff Stewart, who owns Connell's, will be the direct beneficiary of that. It's as simple as that. It has been since 2005. It's just been one of those relationships. So we're here tonight to try to avoid being put in that position where there's one gentleman who's got enough pieces on the monopoly board that he's going to make life difficult for me every year, ad infinitum, or whenever he sees fit. So that's my argument. And that's why we're here. Yeah, there's no changes. We're not doing anything different that we've done since day one for 17 years. We're not planning on doing anything different, serving anything different, not changing the space, not doing anything of that sort. We just put a rooftop patio on the building about two years ago. It's a great expense. There was no opposition then. So we're committed to the neighborhood. We're a good neighbor. We've employed 1,500 students at OU through the years. We've had millions of people come through the doors in 17 years. A lot of these kids need this job to pay their tuition, pay their rent. So, yeah, the assertion that we're going to change things, we're going to become something different, and we're going to become a full-time bar and not serve food, and these are all not accurate. We're going to do the same thing we've been doing for 17 years. No changes.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
You mentioned that you're going to keep the bar, keep the facility the same, not make any changes. So what do you consider yourself today?
Well, it's very close as to what we are. It might change from year, one year to the next if we're 31 or 37 or.
I mean, do you consider yourself a bar or a restaurant?
We are, well, we're a restaurant. Our license is of a restaurant, yes. And we have a full menu. So, you know, I couldn't tell you exactly what the number is, but it's in the neighborhood of the ratio.
Okay. And do you, over the last, say, three years, how many times would you meet the designation of a restaurant?
We have always been in compliance.
Okay. So this is, since you started, you always, you've always met that designation of being a restaurant?
Right. We have always been in compliance with the rules of how the, how low-point beer was counted. Everybody in, every, our establishment has always been in compliance based on those.
No, I'm talking about the change in 2018.
Since 18?
Yeah.
Well, I'd have to look at those numbers, but it's very, it's close. But it might not be 35. It might be 31 or, you know, it could be, it could be close. Every year, it could be a little bit different, you know? I mean, food is a tough animal on Campus Corner. There's some restaurants there that are just closed for lunch now.
Sure.
You know, the corporates come in, the Chipolis and the. So it's become a harder animal. And it's just kind of like, we feel the goalpost has been moved on us. Yeah, 17 years you've been doing business, and, well, now we've changed the ABLE rules, and now you're not in compliance.
So you mentioned, do you serve lunch?
Yeah, no, we're not open for lunch.
So what are your hours of operation?
We're open at four o'clock until 2:00 a.m., and then we're open at 11:00 a.m. on the weekends.
Okay. So is that a typical restaurant designated?
Well, I mean, some restaurants are open for lunch and don't open for dinner. It's very difficult in our business to be all things to all people, to be breakfast, lunch, and dinner at the same place. It's difficult. We, I think when we first opened on Asp, and that's another thing, if we could open in the daytime, and that would just be to the detriment of all the guys around us because now it's just less business for the people who are specializing in lunch, which is not what we're specializing in. So to answer your question, there have been times when we were open for lunch. It wasn't economically sustainable. And I think there's some places that are discovering that now. I know from some of the owners I talked to that they're closed for lunch now. COVID, national change, quick-serve restaurants, you know, you name it. People don't have time to sit down. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah, I just, when I, when I see the typical bar, a typical restaurant, you see them open not during bar hours. You see them typically open during the day. So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, is, you go back to saying you're not going to change anything, but I don't think, when you, when you talk about changing it.
No, we're not going to change the operations
Sure.
of anything we've done. That'll be the same.
And then, I mean, I guess what I'm trying to say is, are you built for, as a bar? Are you built as a restaurant? Or is your operations based upon you being a bar today?
We do both. And there's, we've been serving food every day. There's a cook in the kitchen every day from four o'clock till two in the morning. So yes, the answer is we do both. That's part of our concept. In all of our locations, you'll see on the back, we have five of our locations, full menu in all those locations. It's our concept. It's not, that won't change.
So as the owner, I'm trying to, what I'm trying to say is, do you recognize yourself as a restaurant or as a bar today?
I recognize us as both and very close to the ratio that would, that is put forth by the.
And the only reason I'm asking that is when you go to your, when you go and you see, come down to the, visit the best bar on Campus Corner. So that just, I'm trying to understand.
Best bar, sorry?
When you go to your, to the Google reviews and to your information that shows, your comment says, come down to the, come down and visit the best bar on Campus Corner with the most awesome staff in town.
Well, a lot of that isn't written by any of our employees. That's all social media. That's all posted. That's, that's a sort of an animal unto itself. That's not our sponsored content. That could be a Facebook page or, you know. No, that's not something I put out there.
Okay.
I think it might help if you could give us a ballpark of how much of your percentage of sales comes from that low-point beer so we know kind of approximately what that shift was going to look like.
Yeah, I'd have to look at that number. I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what that number is.
Could you maybe give a estimate or a range of what you think it could be?
I would hesitate to guess. That's the number I had to dig into. I mean, it's a, there's a lot of factors to that number. I'd have to look at it. I don't know, I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
I, just for future reference, when you're, if you go to Planning Commission, I would recommend having that number ready, so having some of those data points on hand.
Okay, so you're asking the amount of low-point beer that we've served in the past?
The, what the amount of your overall sales is to about low-point beer. So we kind of can see what the transition was of what counted towards the food sale and that change, since that's kind of the drive of coming here is that needing to fill, fill new requirements and making sure you're being compliant. So was looking to see from your historic, since a lot of what you're saying is 2005 till 2018, you were doing basically the same thing as after 2018. But how much of, in general, you know, a range of that was low-point beer than that shift? How much did you shift down, you know?
Correct. Yeah, I'd have to look at that.
And you'll go to city council also, so just, we might have that number then, too.
Yes, I agree with that. I can totally feel your pain with the ever, ever moving target and change. How many places do you have?
Six.
You have six altogether? Where are the others located?
We are in Lubbock, and we're in Lawrence, Kansas, and we're in College Station, Texas. We are in Addison, Texas. And we are opening a new store in San Marcos, Texas, south of Austin. And I had the Sixth Street store for 15 years. So it's been a while.
So have you had the same issue that you've dealt with in these other places? They're out of state, so you wouldn't have the same issue, but.
No. You know, each municipality is a slightly different story, and there's nuances to those. We, it really hasn't been an issue. No one, it's never been a low-point beer switched over, not being able to be counted anymore. We have not experienced that before, no. And not experienced anything like that. Now, this is kind of a first for us.
So what was the final catalyst that got you into this and up here with us?
Well, because I have competitors, and there's professional jealousy. And they'd sure like to see me go away so they could flourish. It's that simple. For whatever reason, it's kind of a, you know, that's what I feel like is going on. Because there's, there's a lot of folks on Campus Corner that if you audited every person on Campus Corner, you would not, you may have to, you'd run into some numbers that, you know, would be eye-popping. You know, there's people that aren't even serving food that say they're serving food. I mean, it's a lot of stuff going on that, you know, we're not trying to play those games. I mean, I have a kitchen every day and have for 17 years. So it's kind of surprising. We've got roped into this audit with a few other places at the direct insistence of one or two gentlemen, you know? It's interesting that a person can take shots at, you know, other establishments, you know, I think for obviously transparent reasons.
But you were saying that the, because I'm unaware of this, that the Cross Cannon has what you're looking for.
They have it.
They have it.
They have it. And Mr. Powell, my biggest objector, I believe, in the pre-development meeting, the loudest voice and owner of the majority of these properties on this map that you've got up there. He has signed a letter of support of it that you have in your possession. So when it's his property, it seems to be okay. If he doesn't own the building, it's a real problem.
I'm sorry. You said you've never run into this issue?
Not anything like this. No, not any kind of a change in, you know, like this in other locations.
Was there one in Mad Town or the Mad Town Bar?
There was one in Mad Town, yeah.
Which was closed due to the city?
No, it wasn't closed for that reason. That was the city's reason that they gave, but that wasn't why it was closed.
Okay.
There was other, that's a long.
And I don't, I don't, I don't want to get in, but I just wanted to get clarification.
That was what they put down. But I surrendered our license there because of some extenuating circumstances with our landlord, et cetera.
Okay.
No, that's not, that's not accurate. That was bad journalism.
Any other questions for the applicant? I have a question that might be a staff question. Is, is there a zoning rule regarding proximity to churches and schools with bars that comes into play with this? Sorry, I should have asked that sooner. Laura's going to come up. Thank you.
So there's not a city rule that's from the ABLE Commission, so it's a state rule. So they enforce the 300 feet.
Okay. And do we know by proximity if the, if that would count towards OU or any other of the churches in the area, if any of them are within the 300 feet? That would affect the ABLE Commission?
Yes, we're within 300 feet of the University of Oklahoma. It's an ABLE rule. I'm working with ABLE, I'm working with ABLE on that issue, and we're fully cognizant that we need to be right with ABLE. But we also need to be right with the city of Norman. And so that's what we're here for today, is to get right with the city of Norman. Thank you.
I have a question for staff. Is Cross Cannons the only special use we've approved for Campus Corner? Or variance?
Looking at Jane, I'm not sure, honestly.
Cross Cannons was done in 2019. It's for a brewery, a bar. I cannot think of one off the top of my head. I'm trying to go down the streets. And there's several that are grandfathered, but I can't think of a special use that's been requested within that area for a bar.
So my follow-up is, can you, you can't also think of any that have been requested that we've denied?
I can't off the top of my head at this point.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think the deli and also sugars are also bar licenses as well, so.
It's my understanding those, they may have bar license, but those are grandfathered in. It's my understanding as well.
Let me be.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or applicants?
If I might just make one more comment. I visited Cross Cannon Brewery today, and I was interested to see the menu. There's five items on that menu at Cross Cannon.
Thank you. You had a question?
I do have another question. I believe that Sugars is closed. Will that variance stay with the building? Or does it go away because that bar is closed?
What I've been told from the clerk's office, which is who handles licensing, is since the ownership is remaining the same, they can keep their grandfathered status even though they're changing their name.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicants or staff? We mixed them in a little bit. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open to public comment. I do have a slip provided up here. If anybody would care to make a comment and has not already filled out a slip, they are on the cart back there, these tan pieces of paper to write your name and address on. I'm going to call the name of the one that I have. And when you come up, just say your name and address for everybody. And if you would like a 30-second warning before your three minutes are up, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll yield the full time to you. So Mr. A. Rainey Powell.
Thank you. I believe this change would.
Your name and address, please, for the record.
My name is Rainey Powell, 1926 Pin Oak Circle. I believe this change would be bad for Campus Corner. I think that there are, you would, if this went through, that we would very quickly have four additional requests for the same thing. We would very quickly turn into a bar district. Bars are usually closed during the day, which is not conducive for business for the other merchants that are open. Bars tend to generate a lot of trash. They don't open until the next evening. Nobody's there to pick it up. We don't really want to become a bar district at Campus Corner. We want, we want strong mercantile. We want good restaurants. We want strong lunch businesses. And bars tend to not be open for lunch. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or clarify any of the other comments that were made.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else from the public care to make a comment? Seeing none, I would move to Planning Commission Discussion.
There was an audit done? So there was an audit done? That's what prompted that?
My understanding from the facts presented was that the, they were maintaining the required. the required percentages of food compared to alcohol sales, which was thirty-five percent. Somebody can poke me if that's not correct?
Before the law changed in two thousand eighteen, it was fifty percent.
Oh, thank you.
And now it's thirty-five.
Thank you. So it's fifty percent before, but included low-point beer sales. And now with the new change, it's now thirty-five percent and does not include the low-point beer. And so because of that, they are, there is maybe a concern for complying with the new laws.
Was, was this business the only one that was audited? Or were...
I don't know if there was actually an audit. We may have to ask the applicant if this was, came up from an audit.
There were several audits that were completed or are being worked on at this time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm just going to ask a real quick question. So the, the food requirement was fifty percent before two thousand eighteen, and with the, with the change in the law, two thousand eighteen, they reduced the food requirement to thirty-five.
But the, there was the inclusion of low-point alcohol in, as food. They counted low-point beer was food before, and now it is not food.
Thank you for that clarification.
It is liquid bread, but not actually.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think that my issue is simply that we can't approve one and not approve another. Like, I just think we need to be uniform across the board. That's, that's my take on the whole thing.
I mean, my thought is, is you've got a business owner who is trying to run a legitimate business, and because of law changes or societal changes, or what we eat, what we drink, you know, that affects his business, so how... He's trying to stay in compliance here. And, and if he's not changing his business, but he's trying to comply with business, then... What do you, what do you do?
Sure, yeah, sounds good. Go for it.
And I understand exactly what you're saying. I guess my concern is, if you're operating like a bar, and you don't have the authority to operate like a bar, and you come to this, to this group and say, "I want a special permit or special use permit to operate like a bar," when, like you said, they're not changing anything. So that tells me that it's a bar. And I'd love to know if thirty-five percent, if that thirty-five percent usage of food, if, how, how many times has that not been met? Because if you're a bar, you're a bar.
But what if you weren't a bar except for the low-point beer change? Like, that seems like an unfair standard to a business owner.
I'm not, I'm not denying that. I just look around to, at the other owners that are on the quarter, and they're open for lunch. They're, they're doing what they need to do to try to meet that mark. And so I, you know, if, if I didn't have to be, if I, if I did not have to be open and I knew that I could reduce my cost, you know, or here we are. I'm, I'm kind of hearing a little bit of what, what was being said, that who, who's to say that O'Connell's just comes in and says, "I want to be bar." And so they're not open. And so I'm, I don't know, I'm, I'm just, I'm looking at this, and I'm just, I'm a little, I'm a little torn, I guess. And that's why I'm, I'm being a little hard, hard on it, is because I'm concerned about that.
I would just think that if you, if it were, if it were my business, and something changed, and it's going to change what I can and cannot do within my business, and I'm trying to come forth and stay in compliance, I'm doing the right thing, then...
But it's not changing his business.
It's not changing his business.
That's exactly right. I guess that's the troubling statement for me, is there's no, with this special use, there is no change to the business.
Except for it sounds like a ton of hoops to jump through every single year because of a differentiation of a beer percentage change, right? I mean, am I understanding right what has changed? Like, I mean, he's going to have to do things every year, right? Am I understanding that right?
I'm not sure how often those laws change. I don't know if anybody kind of knows about historical changes or how frequent they've happened.
Very seldom.
But I mean, like yearly, am I understanding right that yearly...
Is the license?
You have to approve things or the licensing?
Licensing is a three-year, I believe a three-year license, and I do believe that they go through and they have, they have to present financial information to, in order to ma- make sure that they remain in compliance. And without the audits, I don't, I don't know about the auditing part.
And so had this change not been made, he could just operate his business?
I don't know. So...
When does the audit results come back? What kind of timeline does that happen on, if it's ongoing now?
The audits are done through the city clerk's office. I believe that the audit started a year ago. I'm sorry, I'm losing track of time with COVID, but I think it's been a year. But licenses are not rejected immediately. We still give, and again, this is the clerk's office, so I don't want to speak for them, but there is a board that they go before to determine, you know, if they should have an extension. So the audit itself is still, you know, ongoing, and it's a, it's a process, and that's why they're here now, to see if they can get the special use. Did that answer your question?
What did, when Cross Cannons happened, what went through with that? I mean, that seems like that's pretty much a bar. There's not much happening food-wise, so what's the difference here beyond it's around the corner?
Well, they did request special use for bar lounge or tavern. I don't have their menu or anything, but they are, I don't have this staff report. Let me see if there's, is a staff report. Bar lounge tavern light manufacturing for brewery and bar onsite is what they asked for. And as far as whether or not they're meeting the percentage, I don't believe they've been audited, so I wouldn't be able to tell you where they are in that, in that category.
I was trying to understand why it's okay to approve that and then not this, where the big difference is. Because it seems like, if anything, that they have more of an argument that we're a restaurant than a bar out, out of the two, so, and I wasn't here for the, any of the discussion for Cross Cannons, so I have no idea if that just went through or if it was a big deal or what.
There may have been a little bit of a difference by it being a brewery versus a bar and food restaurant.
But is it an onsite brewery or off-site?
I believe it's onsite, and that's why there's light industrial. Any other discussion? I'd say I, I've heard a few primary points tonight, specifically that it feels like maybe there was a gray zone that was being operated on from the beginning, from following the rules, but also that somebody did invest a lot of money and time and developed a business based on what they could do and then had rules changed. And I think there are valid points on both sides to that. I do think I have a little bit of a struggle seeing a business that was in operation since two thousand and five having changes taking away from them, when we do have other businesses that are similar that have been definitely longer established, but get that same grandfathering in. So definitely see the concern about not making it a bar district, but when we had this business already since two thousand and five, I feel like this really was an issue of allowing that type of a business more so in two thousand and five. You know, I would be very interested to see the results of that audit. I would like to see what they report their numbers to be as to percentages of, of low-point beer, of food, and everything else. I think that those are crucial numbers that I would like the city council to have for making a vote on that. So I would, I would like to see the applicant have those when this goes to city council to set that precedent. So that's my comment. And I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
And a vote.
You may vote.
Nothing. I hesitate to just start pushing. But you don't.
Everyone has voted, and the motion carried four to one.
Okay, moving to our next non-consent item, the Norman two thousand twenty-five plan amendment and rezoning, item number eight, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of resolution number R-2122-9. Dr. Gary Emmerit requests amendment of the Norman two thousand twenty-five land use and transportation plan from high-density residential designation to commercial designation for zero point three-four acres of property located at eleven thirty-four McGee Drive. And item number nine, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2122-38. Dr. Gary Emmerit requests rezoning from RM-6 medium-density apartment district to C2 general commercial district for zero point three-four acres of property located at eleven thirty-five McGee Drive. I may have said "drive" instead of "doctor" on the item eight, so apologies for that. And I'll take the staff presentation.
Okay. Colton Wayman, Planning Department. We have an application from Dr. Gary Emmerit for a rezoning to C2 general commercial located at eleven thirty-four McGee Drive. In conjunction with the rezoning request, he's requesting for a Norman two thousand twenty-five land use plan amendment from high-density residential designation to commercial designation. This is the subject tract on McGee Drive. It is currently high-density residential designation. To the north and west of the subject tract is high-density residential. To the south is commercial designation. To the east is low-density residential designation and institutional. And then that was the change to commercial that's proposed. And then, of course, the rezoning request from RM6 medium-density apartment districts to C2 general commercial district. Here's the subject tract currently zoned RM6 to the north. It is zoned RM6 to the west, RM6 to the south. It's zoned C2. To the east is zoned R1 and also C2. In terms of existing land use, there is a church that surrounds the site to the north and west. To the south is an animal hospital, along with commercial that's along Lindsey. To the east is Bethel Baptist Church, and then also to the northwest of the site is a subdivision. This is an aerial of the subject tract. This is looking at the north lot line of the site. That's, building is part of the site. This is also looking at the north lot line from the back of the structure. This is looking at the west lot line of the site. This is the south lot line. And then this is looking across McGee from the site at the church. This is looking north on McGee Drive. And then this is the front facade of the building, the east lot line. The applicant is requesting to rezone to allow for a full-service canine aesthetic care facility, which includes a dog grooming, dog grooming board kennels, and a retail store. Staff forwards this request for rezoning from RM6 to C2 as ordinance number O-2122-38. For consideration by the Planning Commission, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll take the applicant presentation. If the applicant is here. Don't see the applicant is here. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, seeing no applicant to ask, I'll move to audience comments. And sorry, any audience comments? Following that, Planning Commission discussion. Any thoughts about a grooming place next to the vet place? Oh, yes, okay. Okay, all right. Seeing none, I would take a motion to approve.
I move.
Second.
And a vote?
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried five to zero.
Moving to non-consent item rezoning and preliminary plat, item ten, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance number O-2122-39. JM Civil Engineering requests rezoning from C1 local commercial district to C2 general commercial district for one point three-eight acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of East Cedar Lane Road and Klassen Boulevard. And item eleven, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of PP-2122-10 for consideration of a preliminary plat submitted by JM Civil Engineering for take five for one point three-eight acres of property generally located at the southwest corner of East Cedar Lane Road and Klassen Boulevard. Staff presentation.
Okay. So we have, have, have an application from JM Civil Engineering to rezone from C1 local commercial to C2 at the location southwest corner of East Cedar Lane and Klassen Boulevard. The subject tract is currently zoned C1 to the north. It's also zoned C1. To the west is R1. And then to the east is C2, and to the south is A2. For the existing land use, the current site is vacant. To the west is our single-family homes. To the north is vacant. To the east is vacant. That's where that car wash is currently being built. To the south is our single-family homes. This is an aerial of the site. It's vacant currently. This is looking at the site across Cedar Lane Road. This is looking at the site east. This is looking at the site looking south on Klassen. This is the intersection. This is from the site looking south at the single-family homes. This is looking across Cedar Lane Road from the site. This is the preliminary plat that was submitted, and this is the site plan. The applicant requests to rezone to allow for a automobile service station. Staff forwards this request for rezoning from C1 to C2 as ordinance number O-2122-39 for consideration by the Planning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did you pick up the cardboard after you photographed it?
No.
Oh, no.
I should have. At least I'm honest.
Any other questions for staff?
Oh, this is like nitpicky, but on the site plan on the south side, there's, you're showing the, they're showing the overhead line that services the property to the south. Is that staying on as part of it? Or if it is, do they need a utility easement to go with it, or is that being moved?
That might be a question for, for engineering, for Public Works.
Todd McClellan, Development Engineer. Can you repeat the question again?
Oh, on, just on the site plan, it's showing a overhead line that services the property to the south. It's on this property that we're talking about. And so I was trying to figure out if that line's being moved or if it was supposed to have a utility easement to cover that or what was taking place.
Yeah, I don't believe the line's being relocated. I believe it's staying there. So, if there's a utility easement for it, it should be shown.
Is it within the property boundary? Or is it just outside?
Well, it's there.
In the public road?
People to the, it appears that the people to the south, that their power lines on our, on this property that we're talking about. If you look on page. Like, you can't even see it on there. Do you have, do you have the thing that we were sent on there?
I got it, hang on, I gotta.
I'm on page, what page am I on?
Ninety-four.
Page what?
Page eighty. Eight, zero. Because it has the neighbor's air conditioner and some sort of winglets.
Zoomed in if you want to come see too, but. Which is a much better image here than, oh, I'm on eighty-nine. Hang on, is eighty-nine a better image of the same?
I don't know.
Ninety-four is the same, exact.
Eighty-nine's just of the, of the preliminary plat. Page eighty's the site plan.
And you're talking about along the south, running kind of diagonally that line?
Yes, this line right here.
Yeah, that, yes, that one. And see the air conditioner over and, and that, that stuff. So were they relocating that line or do we need an easement for that?
That appears to be a private service line.
Right, but it's on our, on the property we're talking about.
Yeah, I don't know what their plans are as far as relocating it. I mean, we'd have to ask the applicant, but that's something we can check into.
Yeah, just double-check with them. Make sure that wasn't an oversight. It looks like they're putting their site fence at the landscape buffer anyway and that they're kind of disregarding it, but.
Page eighty may show some of that too. I'm trying to zoom in on a better image of it.
Yeah, page eighty's the one I'm on.
Yeah, but that's something we'll check into.
Yeah, like I said, I know it's like a nitpicky thing, but.
That's why we have you on here.
At some point, some attorney's going to get upset about it, I assure you.
Yeah, we'll check into it.
Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'd take an applicant presentation.
Hello, my name is Chris Strickland with JM Civil. I thought staff did a great job. I don't really have any comments, so I could take questions. I actually do not know the answer to that question, though. We had a little mix-up, so I'm sort of coming into this project in the middle of it. But we'll definitely take a look at that. Are there any other questions or?
Any other questions for the applicant? Two seconds.
No worries, appreciate it.
Mm-hmm.
Does zoning already allow here that certain setbacks exist for utilities on, by, you know, on either side? Do we have that built into our zoning code that possibly allows for those utilities to remain? That maybe would not require an easement?
That wouldn't be a zoning thing. That would be something that's looked at when the plat is reviewed and filed of record. So we just need to look at this and make sure that it's all clear. We'll get it straight before it goes to council.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, only other thing, comment, nitpicky comment.
Appreciate it.
The scale on the site development plan's wrong.
Hmm.
It's a one-to-ten scale instead of a thirty.
We'll get that fixed.
Told you nitpicky.
No, this is good. We appreciate it.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, any audience comment? Seeing none, moving to Planning Commission discussion. Just want to thank Mr. Axton for his very detailed comments. I thought that was very valuable. Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve with a revised site plan with the proper scale going to city council and with a clarification on if an easement would be required.
So moved.
Do we get a second?
Go ahead.
I'll second.
And a vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted. And carried five to zero.
Okay, moving to item number twelve in ordinance, consideration of adoption rejection amendment and/or postponement of ordinance O dash two one two two dash forty upon first reading by title, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Norman, Oklahoma mending section twenty-one dash one oh seven, twenty-one of the Code of the City of Norman, increasing water line connection charges and providing for the severability thereof. And I'd take a staff presentation.
Thank you very much. Big pardon, okay. Thank you very much for your time. My name's Nathan Maddenwald. I'm a utilities engineer for the Utilities Department. Have a really brief presentation on what's proposed within ordinance twenty-one, twenty-two dash forty. Where we're looking to increase the amount of connection charges primarily for the water line component of that. So, real brief, like I said, brief presentation, we're going to cover just background on what are connection fees, then talk about the analysis that we had done for this, the meetings that we've had to this point, and then what's actually in that proposed ordinance. So what are connection fees? Connection fees are a one-time charge. They're required for new customers or customers that are expanding their level of service. So you have a one-inch meter and you go to a two-inch meter, you would fall under that. And how do we determine them? They're based on actual costs or reasonable cost estimates for additional capacity. One bullet point on here I probably should have added is, what do we use that money for? Those, those funds are used solely for expansion of capacity. So that's new, bigger lines, treatment plant expansions, pump station expansions, things that add capacity to your system. So, the last increase on this, we had a two-step increase, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen, so August of twenty sixteen, that got us to the point we're at today. The water is calculated based on the water meter size and sewer is a two-component, where we do it based on the water meter size and then also square footage wastewater excise tax. So residential square footage, commercial is done based on how much flow is coming to their system, so. And here's a graph, or here's a table showing the connection fees that we currently have today. So, won't go through all of them, but you can see over there on the left is the water meter size or water service line size. And the fees increase as the size of the service increases. And then, over there in the columns to the right are the components for those different fees. So the water line component of it and then also the sewer component. The, those are done administratively by staff. The only thing that's in the code is actually that second column there with those water service line sizes. Okay, so we hired a consultant to look at our current connection fees and determine, are those fees appropriate? So, we were, we do this every two years because we're required to by code. But in addition, we were also, we have a rate increase vote that's out there now that will be on April fifth. We wanted to make sure we're charging everybody a fair amount. So, we're going to increase revenue from our rate pairs. We wanted to look at, should we be doing that for development as well? So Raftellus Financial Consultants, they completed a study for us in May of twenty sixteen. We hired them in twenty twenty-one to come back and reevaluate our fees, determine where they should be. On the water side, we had them look at three different options. Lake Thunderbird augmentation for additional water supply. Alternative two is additional supply from the Oklahoma City system. And then, alternative three is additional groundwater wells. And we get questions, why do we look at three different alternatives? The twenty sixty strategic water supply plan has us looking at augmentation as that's our, our method for growing capacity. Bless you. However, there are still a lot of hurdles that we have to clear in order to make that a reality. So we wanted to look at two other options that we currently have. So we get water from Thunderbird, we get water from Oklahoma City, and we get water from our groundwater wells. So we included those three just to make sure we're covering the gamut of what we might have to do in the future. And then wastewater sewer, we really only have one. We have the north plant that we're looking to build or expand capacity at our existing facility, so we only ran one scenario on that. Okay, so, on the water side, the three alternatives you can see up there, we have the existing fee. Right now, the water component of our connection charge is $1,000. For, and these are three-fourth, three-fourths inch water meter equivalents. That's the standard size we see on typical residential. So, we, we always talk in those equivalents. So, alternative one for the augmentation option, you could charge up to $3,108. And I want to make, kind of make that distinction. When they calculate these fees, they don't say, you absolutely must charge us. They just say, here's a fee that you could charge up to and you could be legally defensive in implementing a fee up to that. Again, as we mentioned with augmentation, we still have a lot of hurdles that we have to clear in order to make that a reality. So, options two and three are something that we would be able to actually go implement in a short-term basis.
I've got a question before we get too deep in this because you're losing me.
Okay.
Explain to us exactly what do you mean by augmentation? Like, I understand OKC, I understand wells.
Okay. So, right now, we have water from three supply sources. We get water from Lake Thunderbird, so we pump it out of the lake, send it to our water treatment plant, and then we pump that into town. Then we also have thirty, excuse me, forty-one groundwater wells out in our system. And we take those, pump those into town as one of our supply sources. And then, over on the northwest side of town, we have a connection from Oklahoma City.
So when you say augmentation, that's Lake Thunderbird?
And so, yes. So augmentation, we would take wastewater from our wastewater plant, pump it over the ridge and into the Lake Thunderbird.
Oh, so it's my, it's wastewater reclamation type of?
Yes, we would do, we would do advanced treatment on that and pump it over the ridge.
We just can't say that, right?
No, I mean, yeah, we're.
I got you, okay, carry on.
No, we, we can talk about it. We're, we're really invested in that. We're doing a lot of pilot testing right now to prove that we are going to do high levels of treatment, that it shouldn't impact anything. But we still have to approve, get it approved by state agencies.
Well, I've seen Lake Thunderbird.
And other cities.
And I've seen effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. And given the two, I would choose the wastewater treatment plant.
We appreciate that. They do a good job as well.
You can put that on record.
Yes. Endorsement, yes, thank you. So, good question. I apologize for getting too far into that. So, we looked at those three options, and again, those are levels that you could charge up to. So, on the wastewater side, we looked at just the one option. And what we did here is we showed kind of comparison of where, what they would calculate and then where it would be. And they did this based on a approximately twenty, excuse me, 2,280 square foot home, which really falls within the range of stuff we would see here in Norman. And what they saw on the wastewater side is really we're getting full-cost recovery on that one right now. And they would recommend no, no change to that. Okay, so, this is the touchiest mouse ever, just gonna say. So, we, skipping to the meetings that we've had, we had multiple meetings with, with council during study sessions. We had, November's kind of where we first talked about the water component. December seventh, we talked a little bit about connection fees, but mostly about rates. Twenty-fifth is when we hit with water connection fees and wastewater connection fees at the same time. Council asked us to come back and have a public meeting. We did that on February twenty-first. Had about twelve to fifteen of the public that was there. And then, we came back to council the following night with kind of results of that, that public meeting. And council asked legal staff to move forward with an ordinance modification to increase the water component of the connection charge by 25%. So, was currently a thousand, would move up $250 to be $1,250. And that's equivalent, the 25% increase, that's equivalent to what we're doing on our rate increase. We're asking for, we need to increase our rate revenue by about 25% as well. Okay, so, the proposed ordinance that, that you have on, in front of you today that we're asking for a recommendation for approval, this shows what, what we've got currently in there in the, so you see the meter sizes on the left, second column is what we have as existing, and then the right is what we would propose with this ordinance change. And so, the portion there on the right, that is the combination of the water and sewer component, as we currently have it now in our code. And, we don't typically, or we typically, when we talk about these, we'll show it in kind of in combination about where we're at. And this was a slide that we've used in, in multiple presentations, just to kind of show, show the way our system is. So, on the left, you have connection fees where we looked at other towns. And no, not all the towns are going to be the same because not everybody's information's as readily available. But over on the left, when we look at our, our city compared to other towns in the metro, we are fairly high on connection fees. Wastewater is something we, we do get a lot of revenue for, but even on the water side, our fees are fairly high. So, when you look at the others. And then, on the right is where we are for our water rates. The bottom is where the City of Norman is now, and in the red, and then the blue is where we would be with the proposed rate increase for the vote that we have on April fifth. And I know I ran through that really fast, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this moment.
Could you pull that slide back up that you just had? Really glad you included that. Yeah, any questions for, I guess, staff applicant?
Sure, I have a question. What, why is there such a huge difference between the connection fee survey that shows wastewater compared to the other communities?
So, I'm, I'm not the best historian, but in around 2000 time, we had challenges with our wastewater system. And actually, had a point where we said we weren't going to approve any more plats for development because of sewer capacity. So we had a lot of discussion with developers about how we can do that better. And we did, we really did three things. We did a sewer sales tax where we got more money to help us upgrade our interceptors. We did a sewer maintenance fund where we could then have dedicated funding source, $5 a month that we paid, that we used to replace sewer lines. And then, we also implemented the sewer excise tax, which was kind of a continuation. We had a wastewater treatment plant investment fund, but it was going to sunset once it hit a certain value. The sewer excise tax that was implemented carried that on. And why that, why that sewer component's so big is, we get a, we get a lot of money from residential development whenever, or commercial development from that excise tax. That's why that fee is so big. Because 275 is the connection charge, but then the rest of that, that bigger component is the excise tax component. And that's because it's 850 minimum charge, and then for every square foot over 1,200 square feet, you times that by two. So, you get like 2,400 square foot home, which is real common, you start getting up there close to $3,000 on that, so.
So, what are we doing with that money?
We use that to expand sewer capacity in our system. The, we have a, we have a balance in our account now, but what we've got it allocated for is we got a debt service on the plant expansion we did. We increased capacity by five million gallons per day, so we use those funds to help pay for those improvements.
Okay. And then, how competitive are we to the other communities when it comes to the, all those connection fees? And talking about the, also talking about the increase?
So, you can see that the two there, I mean, we're, the proposed increase is $250 for the three-quarterage, three-fourth meter equivalent. So, I mean, it adds more cost to, to the cost of a house.
And so, I guess that's, my, my biggest question is, is, will that additional monies that is allocated for the wastewater, is that just, is that, is that from here this four? I mean, we, I mean, how long is that in place?
So there is no proposed change on the wastewater side. Everything that currently is in place is going to remain in place going forward. And that, that is in perpetuity.
Okay.
So the black line is the excise tax for fixing the, the 2,000 problem of the stormwater that otherwise was requiring a moratorium on plats?
Not the stormwater for the wastewater side. It's a fund that allows us to grow our wastewater system as development occurs.
Okay.
And you're talking there on the, the top left.
Yeah. Okay. The other comparison communities that we have here, do any of those are also cities that require utilities to be voted on? I know that that's something that's a little bit specific to Norman.
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
For clarification for me, when you say it's an additional fee on houses, is it, or we're just talking new builds?
Yes. So, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't want to clarify that. So if you have an existing home and you add additional square footage, there will be a excise tax component of that, but otherwise, it's typically for new builds.
And it's $250?
I'm sorry, no, for.
A misunderstanding?
It's going up 25%.
Thank you. 25% of the cost of the home.
No.
I'm clearly not understanding.
No, I'm, I apologize.
Can you dumb it down for me, please?
Can you go back to the previous slide of the previous and then the new charges?
Okay. So.
I apologize.
No, you're okay. No, you're okay. I, I ran through it really fast. So typical home will come in and they'll, if they're built, they'll have a 3/4-inch meter, which is that top line. So their current connection charge is 1,275. And with this proposed ordinance change, it will go to 1,525. And the change that we're making is, to make sure we have more funding for water capacity, we're increasing that $250, that's going to go to our water fund.
And can you give an example of a residential house, which water service size that falls in?
A typical house residential water service will be 3/4-inch, the very first line. Thank you. Good question.
Does this impact, so you get a commercial business and you're going to plug in a 6-inch fire line? Does this impact that, or is it just metered?
It's just meter connections, 6-inch fire lines, since there isn't consistent daily uses, that's just one time when something catches on fire.
They can just tap the line and go on, and you're not looking at $90,000 to do that?
Exactly. It's very uncommon for a fire line to get a connection charge like that.
Sure.
Do you know what size Norman Regional facilities have? Would that be a 6-inch as a comparison? Do we have any other 6-inch, 6-inchers in our community?
The, the new addition that they're doing at Norman Regional, they're looking, I think, at 2/4 inches. They were having them do 2/4s, so that way they can have redundant feeds, two separate meters. I want to say that their existing ones were six, but I, I would want to confirm that to promise you that, so.
So for size scale?
We don't have very many of those large size meters. Most of the large size meters are like OUs or really big facilities like that, like a York or something, so.
I'm sorry, I'm going to go back to the, the green portion of that. I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, how do we remain competitive to the other communities when there's such a large discrepancy or large difference between our connection fees and the, and the, someone may, maybe even more? I mean, are we losing potential businesses, commercial businesses from Norman due to that? Is that a component? Is that a factor?
Well, I, I would say, we calculate the fee, or we calculate, do the study, determine what would be the maximum, and then kind of do, give it to council and say, council, how would you like to move forward with that? So that, I mean, that would be something that could be discussed with the council.
Okay.
Am I the only one that sees that big green line, and it's not proportioned to anything else on the map?
Let's see, a green, like, you?
Great green is black.
Darker colored line?
So, alright.
So maybe, yes, you're the only one that sees the green line.
Maybe that's the problem.
I, I do in general see a discrepancy here, and this is also partly because we are a very unique community that requires regular public utilities to be voted on. And that is such a very rare thing that I think should really be appreciated. I don't have the statistic, but I would guess it's probably less than 5% of all cities in the US, or maybe even smaller. I probably should look that number up, but it's a very small amount, which is probably contributing to why we see our monthly residential utility bills there on the right being so far low. We don't increase those bills very often. However, we do charge developers more and more and more, and that's where we've been making up revenue. I would love to see maybe a little bit more balance in there, because even, even at what we're looking at for the proposed increase of 25%, is still by comparison within reason, you know, for the other communities. It's still just kind of bringing us up online. We're still at the very bottom on that, too. But instead, we are continuing to increase development fees and making Norman less and less attractive for developers that want to come in, that already do regularly comment about things being more expensive. And I think that's something we need to be very careful about, and making sure all things are balanced. And we have some unique stormwater problems here that have to be addressed. It is challenging for us to address them, though, with how we have our utility voting structure done. But I don't know that all of that money always has to come off of new development, so I just want to say that.
Very well said.
How much revenue increase would the 25% on development be versus the 25% on utilities? Like, what is the dollar amount? I get the 25% matches, but what money difference does that make for each of those?
So a, a common number for our development fees that we get from just the waste, or just the water component, we get about $600,000 per year, so increasing that 25%, we'd see it go to about $750,000. On the rate payer side, the 25% increase, we're just under $20 million on rate payer funds, so we'd be increasing that about, by about $5 million, so.
Okay, great. Any other questions, comments, and audience comments? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
I'll second it.
And vote.
You may vote. Everyone has voted, and the motion carried five to zero.
I think several of us will leave here with heartburn tonight for some of the choices. Moving to miscellaneous discussion, does staff have any information for the commission? Do the commissioners have any comments they'd like to make? I had a comment, I know, I saw Mr. McDaniel there, but the Norman Chamber had a presentation today, so we saw some of these numbers in advance that were presented to us from very specific sides of view. And it was brought up that our 2025 plan is about to expire, and we have shelved since 2018 the update to that plan, and that we're starting to see some friction from no longer maybe fitting that plan to what people actually would like to see. So just putting that out there, that maybe city council would like to have a plan to take that off of the shelf and, and help, help us and Planning Commission have some better direction that is updated to current standards, just current expectations in the community. All right, any other comments? If there's nothing before, else to come before the commission, I declare the meeting adjourned.